Good morning, good morning everyone. We greet you with Jesus' joy because the joy of the Lord is our strength. I would like to say it right before we get into our Bible lesson this morning. And this morning, we are in the book of Job in the 29th chapter. But I would like for you, those of you who would like, if you would visit our website, New Mount, Mount is M-T, Olive Baptist Church dot org. New Mount, M-T, Olive Baptist Church dot org. And if you scroll down on our website, you will be able to see, as you continue with the COVID, you will come to the message from that previous Sunday by me Pastor Smith. And if you continue scrolling down, what we have done, our ministers, each minister from the New Mount Olive Baptist Church has been, has given word, those who wanted to participate, have given words of encouragement. And we will run that brief video from Monday through Sunday with our beautiful ministerial staff giving you what the Lord has placed in their hearts. Amen? So this week, we have Minister Audrey Alexandria. So please scroll down and hear her words of encouragement. Each week, there will be a different minister giving words of encouragement. Let us bow our heads in prayer. Eternal and all-wise God, our Father, we thank you for being our Lord, our God, and our Savior. We thank you for bringing us safe thus far. Father God, there has been danger from where we have been to where we are right now. But through your grace and through your mercy, you have allowed us to reach our goals and to be where we are. And for that, Lord, we say thank you. We pray now for the families who have lost loved ones, either through the virus or through some other disease. Father God, because, because of the virus, the diseases have not stopped. There's still cancer, there's still hypertension, there's still sicko cell, there's still AIDS/HIV. There's still, Father God, other ailments that are taking the lives of our families and loved ones. So God, we ask that you bless them and keep them. Bless those who enter the hospital, Father, who are not able to have family members by their bedside or others to come and visit. We pray for them that your healing power might be felt. Lord, thank you for mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, grandparents, cousins, nieces, nephews, aunts, uncles. Thank you, Lord, because it is a blessing to have someone in our lives. God, we thank you. Thank you for jobs. And God, for those that might have lost their jobs, we even say thank you because we have learned from Philippians whatsoever state we are in to be content. Because God, by our faith, we believe that if you gave us a job once, you can give us another job. So we are going to believe and hold on, knowing, God, that all things still work together for the good to those who love you, who are the call according to your purposes. Lord, we thank you. Now, as we go to our study time, allow our heads and our minds, Father, to be filled with your knowledge. Then, Lord, as we receive it, let us be able to give it to someone else. I decrease now in this study time. If it's your will, God, let each person who listens today walk away with something that they can feast on. It is in Jesus' name that we pray with thanksgiving. Amen, amen, amen. As you are in the book of Job this morning, there are going to be a few points today that if you want to jot them down, I want you to feel free to do so. So if you don't have a pen, you might want to get a pencil or pen and a piece of paper as we go and study in case there are things you would like to jot down. Last week, we talked in chapter 28. And it was about that Job, for a few moments, had forgotten about the sores that were all over his body. He had forgotten about his sorrows and the things he was going through. And he talks a little bit to these friends like he's a philosopher or a virtuoso. So far, if you remember, had wished that God would show Job the secrets of wisdom. But Job says, no, the secret things belong not to us, but they, but these things must be revealed, and they have to be revealed by God. We ended up last week with the fear of the Lord. We said that is wisdom. The description of true religion, pure religion, and undefiled religion. It is to fear the Lord, to fear the Lord, and depart from evil, which certainly agrees with God's character of Job. Job has given, after he finished chapter 28, he actually pauses because he gives his friends an opportunity to speak. But guess what? The friends really didn't have anything to say. So this morning, let us look at chapter 29. Chapter 29, verses 1 through 6. Moreover, Job continued his parable and said, "Oh, that I were as in months past, as in the days when God preserved me, when His candles shined upon my head, and when by His light I walked through darkness, as I was in the days of my youth, when the secret of God was upon my tabernacle, when the Almighty was yet with me, when my children were about me, when I washed my steps with butter, and the rock poured out rivers of oil." As we look at verses 1 through 6 this morning, this is, Job is talking to us about his former comforts. Job proceeds to contrast his former prosperity with his present misery. Though God's withdrawing from him, he really feels that a gracious soul delights in God, smiles, not in the smiles of the world. And so there are four things when they are pleasant or holy to Job. And I'd like for you, if you're able to jot down these four things. One is the confidence he had in the divine, the divine, with a capital D, D-I-V-I-N-E, the divine protection. So the confidence he had in the divine protection. We need to know today that God is a comforter. We need to know that he is our refuge, our strength, our very present help in the time of storm. So the confidence that he had in God's divine protection. The second thing I want you to know about Job and his holiness is the enjoyment he had of the divine favor. The enjoyment he had of the divine favor. Job, everything, Job was blessed. It seems like everything he touched prospered. And this is why when the devil talked to the Lord, the Lord asked him, "Have you considered my servant, Job?" Because Job did have favor. But the devil said, "Ah, that's just because you blessed him with all these things. I can tell you that if I take all these things away, Job truly will curse you and die." But we're finding out through all of this, Job is still knowing that he has the enjoyment of divine favor. And that divine favor, of course, comes from God. The third thing is the communion, the communion he had with the divine word. Job was familiar. He had heard the voice of God. He knew that there was a certain way that he should live, there was a certain way he should do things. And he wanted to have that communion with the divine word of God. He wanted to live by the word and live in the word of God. And the fourth thing is the assurance he had of the divine presence. So let's look at this. The assurance he had of the divine, the divine presence of God. So we're looking at the confidence in the divine protection, the enjoyment he had of the divine favor, the communion with the divine word, and the assurance he had of the divine presence of God. Amen? It's awesome. And so God's presence with a man in his house, though it be in a cottage, if you have the presence of God, I don't care if you live in a shack in the back. I don't care if you live on the other side, whichever way is good or bad on the railroad track. When you have the divine presence of God, then that whatever it is you're living in, some sticks, like the three little pigs, whatever, the sticks, the twigs, or the brick, you will know that it is like a castle or it is like a divine palace because the presence of God is with you. Amen? But how, I want you to know today that when your mind is enlightened by the Holy Spirit, when a man walks in the light of God's countenance, every outward comfort is doubled, every trouble is diminished, and he may pass cheerfully by this light through life and through death. And so as we look this morning at verses 7 through 17 of Job, the 29th chapter, let us read. "When I went out to the gate through the city, when I prepared my seat in the street, the young men saw me and hid themselves, and the aged arose and stood up. The princes refrained talking." The princes refrained talking. And it says, "And laid their hand on their mouth. The nobles held their peace, and their tongue cleaved to the roof of their mouth. When the ear heard me, then it blessed me; and when the eye saw me, it gave witness to me, because I delivered the poor that cried and the fatherless, and it says, 'And him that had none to help him.'" Verse 13 of chapter 29, "The blessing of him that was ready to perish came upon me." And it says, "And I caused the widow's heart to sing for joy. I put on righteousness, and it clothed me. My judgment was as a robe and a diadem. And I was eyes to the blind, and feet was I to the lame. I was a father to the poor, and the cause which I knew not I searched out." Verse 17, "And I break the jaws of the wicked and pluck the spoil out of his teeth." Job is letting us know that he did those things. And in doing those things, he knows that certain things are going to happen. He knew that he was in a place where all sorts of people paid respect to him, to Job. The young, the old, the middle-aged, the rich, the poor. It is saying all of these people because he allowed himself to help people. That, you know, he clothed those, he took care of those, he put a robe on them. And he was the eyes for the blind, those who couldn't see, he would help them out. He became a father to the poor, and he would break the jaws of the wicked and plucked out the spoil of his teeth. He was doing a lot of good things, is what he's saying. He said, "Happier the men who are blessed with such gifts as thee. They have great opportunities of honoring God and doing good." Beloveds, how many times do we have opportunities to do good? And we, we are all guilty sometimes of passing by and not doing what we could do. So when we read this, it makes us stop and say, wow, can we do more? Can we really be our brother's keeper? Can we help out more in the time of need or the time of storm? Are we doing all that God would want us to do? And I'm sure if we really examine ourselves, many of us would say, no, we're not. We can all do better. So it's letting us know that they have, they have the opportunity of honoring God. We all do and doing good. But we have great need to watch against pride. We have to watch ourselves against pride. "Happier the people who blesses such men." The Lord has told us that it's our job to feed the hungry, to give garments to those that have none. We are our brother's keepers. And so as we look now at verses 18 through 25, these words have been recorded. "Then I said, 'I shall die in my nest, and I shall multiply my days as the same. My root was spread out by the waters, and the dew lay all night upon my branch. My glory was fresh in me, and my bow was renewed in my hand. Unto me men gave ear and waited, and kept silence at my council. After my words they spake not again, and my speech dropped upon them, and they waited for me, as for the rain, and they opened their mouth, why, as for the later rain? If I laughed on them, they believed it not, and the light of my countenance they cast not down. I chose out their way, and sat chief, and dwelt as a king in the army as one that comforteth the mourners.'" What this is saying is, being thus honored and useful, because people listened when he spoke, people listened to what he had to say. But he was saying that, as he hoped to die in peace and in honor, because he had done what he thought God wanted him to do. So when he dies now, he wants to die in honor. And he thought he was going to die at a good old age, knowing that he was not yet that old. He says, "If such an expectation arise from lively faith in the providence and promise of God, it's well; but if from conceit of our own wisdom, from the dependence or unchangeable earthly things, it is ill-grounded." In other words, if I'm doing what God wants me to do, yay, that's great. But if this stuff is happening to me because I've done something wrong and didn't know I was doing it, then I want to make sure that I turn from it because I don't want to sin before God. Everyone that has the spirit of wisdom has not the spirit of government. But Job was a blessed man. Job was favored by God. So Job had the wisdom that God gave him. And he also had knowledge of government, of how to deal and work with people. And everyone does not possess both of those traits. So yet, he had this tender side of him, that he would honor the widows and he would help those that were in need of help. As we now go to chapter 30 in Job, I want us to be mindful that in verses 1 through 14, Job's honor is going to be turned into contempt. We're going to look at that. And in verses 15 to 31, Job is a burden, he becomes a burden to himself. But God always has a way out. So let us look at chapter 30, verses 1 to 14. "But now they that are younger than I had me in derision, whose fathers I would have disdain to have set with the dogs of my flock. Yea, where too might the strength of their hands profit me, in whom old age was perished? For want and famine they were solitary, fleeing into the wilderness in former times, desolate and waste, who cut up mallowes by the bushes, and juvenile roots for their meat. They were driven forth from among men; they cried after them as after a thief, to dwell in the cliffs of the valleys, in caves of the earth, and in the rocks. Among the bushes they braved, under the nests they were gathered together. They were children of fools, yea, children of basemen. They were vileer than the earth, and now am I their son. Yea, I am their thy word. They abhor me; they flee far from me, and spare not the spit in my face, because he hath loosed my cord and afflicted me. They have also let loose the brittle before me. Upon my right hand rise the youth, and they push away my feet, and they raise up against me the ways of their destruction. They mar my path; they set forth my calamity; they have no helper." Verse 14, "They came upon me as a wide breaking end of waters; in the desolation they rolled themselves upon me." Job here is contrasting his present condition with his former honor and authority. How men looked upon him or looked at him with great admiration before to now, as they see him weak, as they see him in this critical state and thinking that he is truly going to die soon. They see him now with less honor and less authority. With little cause have men to be ambitious or proud of that which may be so easily lost, and what little confidence is to be put in it. We should not be cast down. If we are despised, reviled, and hated by wicked men, we should look unto Jesus, who is the author and finisher of our faith, who endured the contradictions of sinners. You know, beloveds, people will have their own thoughts. They will say what they want, I don't care sometimes what you tell them. They will still have in their minds their own thoughts as to what happened. You can sit there and tell them what's going on or what you're going through. But they're like, mm-hmm, yeah, okay. Because suspiciously in their own minds, they've already painted the picture. And sometimes, unfortunately, it's that picture of their wickedness, of their deviousness that they put out rather than what you have actually told them. So now let's look at 15, 31. "Terrors are turned upon me; they pursue my soul as the wind, and my welfare passeth away as a cloud. And now my soul is poured out upon me; the days of affliction have taken hold upon me. My bones are pierced in me in the night season, and my sinews take no rest. By the great force of my disease is my garment changed; it bindeth me about as the collar of my coat. He hath cast me unto the mire, and I am become like dust and ashes. I cry unto thee, and thou doth not hear me. I stand up, and thou regardest me not. Thou art become cruel to me; with thy strong hand thou opposest thyself against me. Thou lifted me up to the wind; thou causeth me to ride upon it, and dissolveth my substance; for I know that thou wilt bring me to death and to the house appointed for all living. Howbeit he will not stretch out his hand to the grave, though they cry in his destruction! Did not I weep for them that was in trouble? Was not my soul greed for the poor? When I looked for good, then evil came unto me; and when I waited for light, there came darkness. My bowels boiled and rested not; the days of affliction prevented me. I went mourning without the sun; I stood up and cried in the congregation. I am a brother to dragons and a companion to owls. My skin is black upon me, and my bones are burned with heat. My heart also is turned to mourning, and my organ into the voice of them that weep." Job here complains a great deal. He's complaining, but hallelujah, he's not cursing or denying God. He's letting us know that, you know, if there is some sin that I've done, let me know that at this time because, God, I'm pleading out to you. I'm begging you, I'm asking you, what have I done? What have I done to hurt or to, to, to do, what have I done to sin against you if I have sinned? But woe to those who really have God for an enemy. See, Job has not done any wrong. So even though he's complaining here, he's really saying, you know, Lord, help me. How many times, beloved, have we been in situations where we've just had to ask God, "Lord, please help me?" Some of us have really been in pain or with our body, with our healings. Some of us have been really messed up in our finances. Some of us have been into decisions of undesistiveness because with our children, we didn't know which way to go, how to help them. We've been in some decisions or undecisions with our jobs that we were saying, "Lord, please free us, help us." And sometimes it seems that death was the solution. But how many of you prayed and went to bed and prayed so hard that you fell asleep? But when you woke up the next day, guess what? You're still here. You're still here through the grace of God because it was not God's desire to take your life. We have to go through the tests and the trials and the tribulations of life. Someone once said, "No cross, you don't get no crown." So if we're not confronted with some problems, if we're not confronted, and you don't have to do anything wrong, but we are going to go through the situations. I just believe the situations, the trials will make us stronger because there is joy in our suffering. There is peace in our suffering. Because when we think we can't go on, when we think our hope is gone, when we think we have lost it, and we're about to lose our minds, we're reminded of Timothy when he says to us, "God has not given us a spirit of fear, but one of power, love, and a sound mind." So nothing is going to take away your mind, beloveds. I want you to know that there is no problem that God cannot solve. If he brings you to it, he'll take you through it. All we have to do is trust in him with all of our hearts. And lead not on our own understanding, but in all our ways acknowledge him, and he shall... and he shall direct our path. The steps of a good man are ordered by the Lord. I want you today, I don't care what you're going through, don't care what the doctors say. I want you, don't care what the lawyer is saying, don't care what the man is saying about repossession or whatever. Trust in the Lord. And when you're trusting, some, trust in the Lord and do good. Just know that the Lord will bring you out. Just don't doubt him for a moment. I want you to know that God knows our situations. And as we don't have time to complete all of 31, I'm going to wait, because 31 is very important. And I want to be able to take my time and go through that. So, next week, we will do 31, 32, and 33. Amen, chapters 31, 32, and 33. And as we get into chapters 31 next week, I want you to be cognizant that as we are covering this, we're going to talk about Job declaring his uprightness. He is going to talk about his integrity. We're going to talk about his mercifulness and that he's not guilty of covetousness nor adultery. So, read 31, chapters 32 and 33. And we will take our time to go through, so we can get the essence of that. Amen. As you remember, as you go through this week, we'll be looking for you. So, get your bread and your drink ready. Get your bread and your cup ready for Sunday, because on this Sunday is the first Sunday in June, and we will celebrate the Lord's Supper together, Sunday at 11:00 a.m. live. God bless you. May his peace be upon you.